Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the November 5th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, yeah. The only announcement that I have is it's nice to actually see people in the audience for a selectmen's meeting. Other than that, is there anyone here for anything that is not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing as none, we'll move into item number one, which is the hearing for the fiscal year 2020 class tax classification with the Board of Assessors. Are the assessors here? Come on up. Impossible vote. Evening, gentlemen.
How we doing?
Good, good. How are you?
Good.
My name's Jack Latchford.
Carol Field.
Anthony Sacco.
We're here to talk about the classification hearing. I believe you've got a notice from our office detailing some information. I'll just quickly review some of the numbers. For the calendar year 2018, we had a sales analysis which saw a 6% increase in the assessed value for fiscal year 2019. Basically, our town assessed value is a little over $1 billion, which is 0.685% increased from last year. That being said, we anticipate a fiscal 2,000 tax rate to be $16.98 per thousand, which shows a decrease of 52 cents. However, we're going to show an increase in the home assessed value. So, the average single-family home is going to be valued about $325,000 compared to $306,000 last year, which is going to show an increase of $156. One of the items to discuss today is a dual tax rate, CIP, which is the commercial industrial personal property. If we were to have a shift in the CIP, it would show a decrease to $1646 for the individual, but an increase to $25.47 for the CIP rate. That obviously would scare off any potential business, and any business that we did have would probably vacate the town as well. So, the board did vote to have a single tax rate for all class properties this year. Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Very much so, yeah.
Just a few, one other thing we did, we saw 24 new homes built as of 19, or January 1st, 2019. So, building is still continuing in Douglas and actually at a stronger rate than in the past few years. In the past few years, we saw in single digits. Now, we've got a few big developments going on in Douglas right now. So, that 24 number is probably going to stay the same, if not increase, in the next couple of years.
All right. That's all good news.
Yeah.
I think so. So, we would need to take a vote to approve the single tax rate?
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is Anthony, this is Hal made the second. Yes.
So, Hal's got a good idea. We put the whole town up for sale for a billion dollars. Not liking that idea, man?
No?
Okay, so this brings us to our second agenda item. Everything good?
Yep.
Okay. Which is recognition of the fire department's Rachel Jackson and Tony Worcester. And we do have our fire chief here as well. And if all three of you could come on up.
Just sign that.
Evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
These are my favorite agenda items, so.
I wanted to thank you, gentlemen, for having us here tonight. We had an incident with a patient very recently where I want to recognize the actions of Lieutenant Tony Worcester and Rachel Jackson, paramedic Rachel Jackson, who you have not had the privilege to meet, but you've had the privilege to meet. She's one of our per diem medics right now. Comes highly decorated out of Worcester, working for Worcester EMS. And back in the days, before we had an ALS service, we had MP 2181 out of Milford Hospital, and Rachel was a paramedic out of there. So, Rachel, we knew Rachel from the times when we were pulled over on the side of the road requesting an intercept and asking for paramedics because we didn't have them. So, thanks to you, gentlemen, and your ability to hear my requests as a department leader. The request was always, let's protect our town adequately with paramedics and an ALS service, and also cover our service 24/7. So, we know we made that leap, and I'm very grateful to you, gentlemen, for supporting us in that way over the past few years. January will be three years we've been full-time 24/7. And we have two people in the audience tonight. We have Paul Burnier and his wife Lori, who, Paul was the one who suffered a medical emergency. They'll speak after we're done, if they feel like they want to. You could certainly meet them. But Paul suffered a medical emergency and suffered a cardiac arrest in the back of our ambulance. And Rachel was on her game, recognized the rhythm, and had Tony pull over, double-check to make sure the rhythm is accurate, because when you're in an ambulance and you have bumps, that can cause artifact, that can mimic something. So, it wasn't artifact, it was a true medical emergency. And so, they went into action, and we're here to talk to you about it tonight. And again, we want to recognize the efforts of Lieutenant Worcester and Rachel, because again, above and beyond the call of duty. We're very proud with their action, and we're certainly very grateful that we have the Burniers with us this evening, and that is a very good outcome. So, we want to commend Rachel and Tony. They obviously have letters of recommendation going in their file. I know that I asked you, gentlemen, to form up some certificates and some awards, and I know you've done that. And really, that's about all I have to say outside of thank you very much to both of you. Your job well done. And again, I'm very grateful to you, gentlemen, for allowing us to be in a situation where we're actually adequately protecting the people of our town as best we can. We have another ambulance coming very soon, so we're very appreciative of the support that you folks have shown us in the past few years, for sure.
It was our pleasure. So, I think before we do anything, you folks have anything you'd like to say, or?
Would you like to come up?
Yeah, come on up.
Three years into the town, we just moved here. We are over there at Bad Luck Pond, southwest of Main Street.
It was bad luck that day.
Appropriately named, I guess.
We're their biggest fans. They were amazing.
I would like to say, I wouldn't even feel right to stand here and not say thank you to both of you. You saved his life that day. But aside from that, it was a crazy chain of events that occurred that afternoon, and they weren't all a coincidence. They were because these two made the correct calls and the right, you did the right things. He wanted to be taken to Milford Hospital, but you made the call because you knew that Milford probably wasn't going to be the correct place to bring him. So, you made the decision to bring him to UMass, which was the correct thing, because he might not have made the transport, you know? And so, thank you, both of you, for everything you did that day. But I know you guys have a busy agenda. I just want to say one other thing. Rachel, I want to thank you specifically, because you gave me some amazing advice that day. Maybe you don't remember, but I do. I was in a panic, obviously. My husband was turning blue on me. I never had to call 911 before. And I didn't know if I was going in that ambulance with you, or if I was going to follow the ambulance. But you very clearly and very directly and calmly said, "You're not going to follow the ambulance. You're going to take a moment to calm yourself. Your husband's in very good hands. You're going to secure your home. You're going to grab a few things that you need at the hospital for your husband, and you're going to slowly make your way to the hospital." And that's exactly what I did. And I needed to hear that from you that day. You calmed me, and he was in very good hands, obviously. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Can't thank you enough. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
I hope Tony shared some of the pastries with you.
Tony's not known for sharing pastries.
I'm asking everybody, and I see that, you know, the fire department, we also brought a platte to the police department, because we're very, you probably not have gotten any either. Around here, yeah. We love the town of Douglas, and it's getting better all the time. So, thank you. Thank you.
So, I can say that every day, we have you guys and going over your budgets, and I come down to the fire station for cert meetings, and my wife's had health issues, I've interacted with the medics in town, and the police often 911 calls that have had to come to my house. And I can say beyond the shadow of a doubt, our first responders are hands down the best. I appreciate everything that you guys do for our community. The best decision, I think, that this board's ever made was pushing to get you guys to 24/7 service, because the town desperately needed it. And, I mean, I'd like to, every day, we'd like to just give a certificate of appreciation and thanks to all of you, because every single person on the fire department, police department, and even on our highway department go above and beyond what their normal calls of duty are on a daily basis. And it goes unrecognized a lot, but I can say not from this board. So, we see you guys, we know what you need, and we will continue to do whatever we can to support each and every one of you. And sincerely, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, with that out of the way, we do have, you know, I wish we could do a lot more, but we do have two certificates of appreciation. Should we go over there? So, we're very pleased to present to Lieutenant EMT Anthony Worcester for recognition of a successful effort in saving a human life, which involved exceptional courage and/or performance. So, this is for you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. And we also have one for paramedic Rachel Jackson, also for recognition of a successful effort in saving a human life, which involved exceptional courage and/or performance. So, and Chief, thank you for your leadership with these guys. So, you've made some really good choices and hires, and you've got a solid staff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a heart attack. I plan to have it in Douglas.
Was there ever any doubts? How you feeling?
I'm feeling great.
Good.
Well, right now, if you weren't, you're in the right spot.
Wonder if he's taking statins or?
I'm saying a violation.
You weren't in it anyway.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Okay. Onto far less fun stuff. So, review of the November 18 special town meeting with the town moderator and town clerk. Discussion of motion relative to Article 5 impossible votes.
He only said that he didn't know it was you.
I recant the statement now that I see that you're sitting in front of us.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Okay. It looks like it's just me. So, we'll start with Article 1. The increase in tree warden expense, $50,000. And, yeah, we'll start with that one.
So, there was this whole thing about trees, like there was, we went over the initial budget on that, and there's still a lot more that we have to do with it.
Yeah, we're nowhere close. I mean, we doubled the budget at Springtown meeting to $40,000, and now we're experiencing storms and losing power on a regular basis, because there are just close to 5,000 dead trees in the public rights of way. So, the $50,000 isn't going to touch the vast majority of it, but will get us through some of the worst of it.
And what specifically is that money going for?
It goes to professional tree services that have bucket trucks.
Clearing away from the lines.
Clearing from the public rights of way. So, they're town-owned trees. And they'll be targeting the largest and most far gone on the major thoroughfares, especially if there's a feeder line where National Grid hasn't yet prioritized, so.
Okay.
This is a drop in the bucket compared to what National Grid is spending in Douglas right now.
Yeah. I see them quite often trying to clear away, you know, the branches especially from the lines.
Just a question on that, though. Who prioritizes what trees need to go? Is that the professional?
So, yeah, a professional arborist comes around with Director Furno and reviews the major issues.
Affiliated with the tree company?
Really affiliated with Grid more than anything else.
So, it's supplemental in what Grid's doing?
Yeah, because we could never bear the expense of what they're doing.
Okay. And then, the ambulance wages, is that increased calls, and so it gets reimbursed, or was that unexpected expenses?
Well, I noticed the finance director hanging back in the shadows. There's an annual reconciliation between the wages and the ambulance restricted receipts account. And we also have bundled in this, a budgetary consideration, we have vacancies that have opened up. The positions were held by and therefore were budgeted for EMT basics. But when we go out to hire, we seek EMT paramedics, which are paid that much more. So, there's some of that in there, too. Can you explain this annual, every year, fall town meeting, you have to adjust the fire and ambulance?
Yeah, it's not getting so prominent now, because we've got a good handle. We had, um, we also have personnel leave this year, so we had to backfill. So, we do an issue aware, at every fall town meeting, we look at the needs of the departments, and we look to address them at this time, because this is the last town meeting that we can raise it appropriate before we set the tax rate. So, this set of departments are what we feel needs attention at this time. We had some issues with the ambulance with fire.
So, yeah, without going into a tremendous amount of detail, we have a full-time member of the department who is out injured on duty. And the mechanics of this are that he's covered by the town's insurance for, under the appropriate state law. But we pay his salary, and we're reimbursed by the insurance. It doesn't go to the wage account, it goes to the general fund. And meanwhile, we're backfilling his shifts with per diem and other arrangements. So, we're paying a lot of money to fill that one shift, and that's kind of where we are. Now, the flip side of this, we'll be closing that to free cash.
Right, it'll close in the gentleman, and close in the free cash next year.
Okay. Okay, Article 2, OPEB, continuing to fund OPEB. Fire year bill. Pretty straightforward. Capital improvement, again, pretty straightforward. Article 5. Do we want to talk about that?
Sure. When this agenda was posted for the board, we still thought that we had just drafted a motion for Article 5 that day and began to circulate it, because we recognized that the article was unclear. And because I can't help myself, I tripped over myself at the FinCom meeting and made it even more confusing by adding a project into the discussion that really wasn't relevant at all. The original article is to fund engineering associated with a project to extend water and sewer down Davis Street in order to service industrially-zoned land that is not now served by water or sewer, and to work with a developer to achieve additional utility connections to make an attractive site for the developer. The requirements of the MassWorks Grant Program, which is the major state program for economic development, is that a project must be shovel-ready. So, we don't apply for a conceptual plan. We have all the engineering plans, and everything is done, the cost estimates are very firm, and we're ready to rock and roll. So, if they award the grant to the town, we'd have sufficient funds to pay for the project. So, that means having engineer drawings. When you're going to go 3,500 feet, or 800 feet, or 8,000 feet with these lines, we're going up and downgrade, we may hit ledge, we may do any number of stormwater accommodations if we're going to open Davis Street, et cetera, et cetera. So, all of that was estimated with a formal quote from STANTEC, which is the Standing Engineer of Record, if you'll call it that, for the Water and Sewer Department, and arrived in this article, which wasn't very specifically written. So, the idea of the motion was to be very specific about the project that would be funded, and then to reduce the amount, actually, by half, because we don't need all the construction engineering funded upfront, we only need the preliminary engineering that will support the procurement documents. At this point, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis, I know was going to be the maker of the motion, the recommendation to everyone is that we pass over this this year. We still would like to keep it on the warrant, because we think we should brief town meeting, briefly, with, you know, five minutes.
Without formally taking it up.
Right.
You know, that's kind of the best you can do, is to just kind of say, "Look, this is on the horizon, it's something, you know, we're looking forward to. We didn't really like the wording that went out there."
It's the wording, and then actually, you know, so we really started to make significant progress with this proposal back in April. And so, the idea was, all right, well, we've got to get moving for fall town meeting on this. And all this time, there's been negotiations going on around the purchase and sales agreement. So, as we sit here this evening, despite many representations to the contrary, the project proponent still does not have full site control. And so, therefore, parking free cash like this would be premature.
Okay.
It is more than just the wording of the article. The wording of the article is, unfortunate, we may have found a way around to fix it, but we won't even get to that conversation, because at this point, the developer, we're looking more at May for end of town meeting.
Okay. Article 6. Kind of is similar to, you know, Article 1. What are the expenses surrounding that?
They had a couple breaks. And again, Bob looks at his budget the same as we look at ours, and he has to anticipate from November through June. And he felt, based on the high expenditures in the fall, that he would need additional $60,000. So, retained earnings was certified for them. It's a transfer from retained earnings into his expense account.
Okay. Shady Knoll, I'm guessing that's just basically to survey the land to, in the future, accept the road, or am I way off on that?
So, the road was accepted, and the developer unfortunately never put in the highway bounds that mark the critical points and the change of the curvature of the road. Those bounds form the bases of all surveys of the subdivision, because they're memorials in the ground. The surveyor would come locate that and then take his measurements, his or her measurements, from that spot. They were never installed. So, what's happening is with some of the, or quite a few of these subdivisions where this happened, somebody's looking to sell a piece of property or looking for zoning relief, they need a site plan. They have to start way back at the last known boundary, which may be a long distance away from the subdivision. It's money. It's money from our taxpayers. Unfortunately, there's no surety remaining for this expense. So, the planning board, rather than trying to fix this all at once, is going to phase this in over a couple of years. This one is one of the more important ones, where some of the residents have complained, so it's about 12:05 to do the work.
How old is that subdivision?
You'd have to ask that.
It's unfair, you're the newest guy here.
This is a constant issue for us, because we're still actually going back and forth with the developer about the surety, because we took taxes, passed due taxes out of the surety in order to close this up. I don't think he's touched it since 2014, if that rings a bell, but I think he was probably more in 2007, 2006, when he started this. It sat there for a long time.
Seems like a big deal not to have these boundaries. I imagine we've got safeguards and controls now that make certain that doesn't happen?
Yeah, I think with the passage of time, planning board and ConCom are getting better about assessing surety and not releasing all of it until all the work is done.
Is there any other precedent for doing this in other areas, where we've town money?
No, unfortunately, this is a cleanup item there. There really is no, the developer's gone, and there's no, this isn't a condominium where you have an association that owns the common space, that's not what's happened here. The town owns the road, the people own the lots, so.
Guess we could do a betterment fee or something.
I suppose you could.
Well, we should prevent it from happening in the future.
We should definitely prevent it in the future.
Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
No problem. Article 8, again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Article 9, sounds like it gets reimbursed after we do it, correct?
Yeah, we get a National Grid incentive. Again, you cannot take an incentive and pay it directly against the project, it has to be taken into the general fund and it's part of free cash. So, it's, this has to be done so the work can be completed, but will get reimbursed.
Okay. And then, we're on Article 10. Very good.
You have a different version.
Article 10 is like the 19th hole.
It's the best one.
There's either some tequila or scotch in Article 10. Any questions for me? Like I said, everything seems pretty straightforward, especially if we're not doing Article 5 on this one. So, I give five minutes for explanation on Article 5, and then I'll accept a motion to pass over and move on.
Okay.
How's the makeup of FinCom these days?
Better than it has been in a long time, so. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You haven't had any farm issues yet, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, so I believe we're still a member down, but like I said, that's certainly a lot better than we have been. Hopefully, we can start, you know, a push to fill that last member, but, you know, they're doing the great work that they always do, and some of the newer people are coming up to speed, and so it's good to see people stepping up.
They're allowing me only five minutes to speak.
Got you at these meetings?
Yeah.
You can overrule that quick if somebody makes a mistake of saying found money.
I set the ground rules.
All right.
Five minutes, you won't get in trouble.
I talked very fast.
Did they get the every dollar has a story lecture as well?
They got a little ground rule story, and I'm adding to the agenda our jeans items now, because I have to raise my hand at the end of the meeting.
Wow. Anything else?
Well, maybe you asked what happened. Appreciate it.
We don't need to take any votes, right? All right. So, we're on to approved change of managers for the SoCal Club liquor license? Is there anybody from the SoCal here? Because I believe it did say that Mr. Maniac was going to be here. He is not.
Is that Bob's turn or something?
I don't really think that we need him here, do we?
I don't think so, no.
No, I don't like so. Mad if he related to Bob.
Entertain a motion to approve Mr. Maniac as the new manager.
So moved.
Made by Dave. Made by Dave, seconded by Mike.
Manaric.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're on to a Chapter 61A notice for Chesbrough property and possible votes. Anyone here to speak on that? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Julie Boschman, I'm with Nexamp, a Boston-based solar company. I was here late last spring to discuss the pilot agreement for this project off of West Street, which has since been executed, and since that time, we've received all approvals from the town, as well as our state incentive award and our final contract with National Grid. We're fully financed, so we're ready to start construction. This small part of the project is a 12-acre landlocked parcel between Church Street and West Street, owned by the Chesbrows. Part of our planning board condition of being able to pull a building permit is that we remove that parcel from Chapter 61, so we are respectfully requesting that the board waive their 120-day right of first refusal, so that we can get started with construction.
Seems straightforward to me.
Very much so. We get more revenue than we did previously.
All right. Everybody care to make a motion on this?
I'm so moved.
So moved?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, made by Hal, seconded by Dave, for the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask about the form that the town provides? Do they have their owner have one with me?
I believe we have our own form on this. That's a Suzanne question.
That's a Suzanne question, exactly.
We're crippled without Suzanne.
Do you want to leave your form?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see to it it gets filled out.
One way or the other, we'll keep something executed.
Okay, I believe I have all your names on here, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
All right. Next is approved expenditure from Rec. Soldiers Field donation account and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, just back to the prior item, again, maybe, is there a time, are you guys needing this immediately, like, real quick, for what you're looking to do?
I think as long as the planning board and the conservation commission have the right of first refusal was waived, then we should be okay.
Okay.
So no big rush.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I'll give that to Matt to put on Suzanne's desk, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Is it my turn?
It is your turn.
All right. Did some homework for this particular item. As I think you all know, in 1946, the Boston Red Sox played the Yankees in a exhibition game. What I found out was, that game was actually an exhibition game, because the regular season Major League Baseball game that was supposed to take place between the Red Sox and the Cleveland Indians, I believe, was rained out. So I had learned about that, but I thought that was interesting. Everyone thinks, oh, it's an exhibition game, but, you know, our guy Schuster had as much power as you could possibly have to pull the Red Sox to Douglas seven days before a World Series, which is pretty neat. Over and above that, I found out that Soldiers Field was named Soldiers Field as part of that town, the town's bicentennial celebration, and they named it Soldiers Field in honor of the 303 soldiers that returned from World War II, and recognized, I believe, the 14 that did not make it home. So Soldier's Field has been one of the best ball fields, I'd say, certainly in the Rock Stone Valley, but having been in fields all across central Mass, I think our little town has a truly remarkable space with that. So Dynamic Douglas Day had donated 500 bucks for the improvement to Soldier's Field. It was placed in an account that is controlled by the Selectmen to pay homage and recognition, further recognition to...
Our finance director shaking her head.
It's in a donation account for Soldier's Field, it just has to be brought to them, how are you gonna use the money, and they can approve it?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Gene's not shaking her head when you're talking, we're gonna recognize Gene.
Right. So long and the short of it...
Gene wouldn't be a baseball fan.
He is a baseball fan.
Long and the short of it, I would like to use some of these monies towards additional signage at the field to pay homage to the fact that it is in recognition of the sacrifices of so many. So I'm seeking the board's approval to pursue signage down there to reinforce the importance of when the national anthem is being played, for instance, that, you know, for that two and a half minutes or so, you just take a moment and really think about how blessed we are to be here, and why we're able to play baseball and live in freedom.
All right.
The motion to be up to $500, anyway?
Well, I was gonna say, you said some, and enlighten Gene, do you have a dollar amount?
And so you don't have to come back again, are there additional plans for the rest of the money?
At this time, no. I think there's enough signage needed down there between the small field and the larger field. Some rough estimates indicated I'd get close to that 500 mark.
Okay, so this is really gonna lead up all of that?
Yeah, I think so.
I would make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of up to $500 for increased signage, as Mr. Bonan described at Soldier's Field.
Second. Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you happy with that, Gene?
Thank you, Tim.
It's all about keeping Gene happy.
I made the motion.
That's it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, everyone.
All right.
One more thing, I do wanna give a shout-out to, and the woman, the archivist's name is on a poster in my office, but I went down to the library to get some information, and the thought that, you know, this town was on the brink of losing, you know, really hit home when I walked out of there, thinking that it's a tremendous service, so shout-out to the Libel people.
Agreed. Wasn't Ted Williams presented a shotgun or some?
Him and DiMaggio were.
Was it a shotgun, or, I thought it was like washing machines, all kinds of stuff given out by Schuster.
Firearms.
Yeah, no, there's definitely a picture of DiMaggio and Schuster and Williams.
It ended up?
It would be...
Nice to have.
Maybe it was one he used to shoot the pigeons in Fenway Park with.
I've heard that story.
Yeah.
Ted Williams did it?
Ted Williams, yeah.
Maybe he got a few reporters on the way, too.
They had to stop when he started hitting some of the lights.
Yeah, we hear Ted Williams, you can do anything at Fenway, I suppose, right? Most anything.
That's one of the times that I can say that. It's unfortunate that everyone is in attendance, because we're assigning articles to a special town meeting next. Usually we like it when somebody's not here, so they can get...
Mr. Chairman, I would remind you of a question.
Well, I have a question about that.
I'm sure you do, Mr. Hughes.
If we're assigning articles this evening, how is it that my name appears on the first one?
We assigned some of those articles in your absence.
Why would you do that last time if it was not on the agenda?
I think it was a placeholder for you, knowing how enthusiastically you present articles at town meeting. Does that sound about right?
Sure.
Yeah, placeholders. Seems like the right thing to do.
I would beg to differ, but...
The Selectmen Bonan was insisting that we have a plan.
I'm sure, as a planning official, he's a professional.
It was a relatively simple plan, but...
It's true.
Thank you.
All right, so do we wanna go down through and start assigning these, or do we stick with our rough draft, and it's basically the Hughes Town Meeting, and we can all stay home?
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of efficiency in town government, I think the work that we completed two weeks ago was sufficient, we should just supplement what needs to be done tonight.
I can't disagree with that, because I actually had phoned subject to that from Mr. Hughes at one point in time, right now, that, in my tenure here.
Yes, I recall that.
I'm just looking for my copy of this.
In the unlikely event he would make an error on one article, he can recoup on another article, he can move right along.
We just reviewed this with Keith, and I said it somewhere, and I'll be...
I wouldn't mind doing five and giving an explanation as to...
Oh, there it is, I got it.
I'd like to do maybe the explanation about five, a little economic development background that...
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, so do we have notes as to who, which ones we'd originally signed, Mr. Hughes?
The first one, 1 through 4.
This is a little bit incomplete. 1 through 4 were previously marked down for Selectman Hughes. I recall Selectman Davis having already volunteered to do Article 5.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to have him do the explanation, shouldn't it?
Yeah. And Article 6 would be the Water Commissioners.
Yep.
Article 7 would be the Planning Board, and I think your board, Mr. Chairman, needs to decide who do 8 and 9, those big town matters.
I would be happy to do 9.
That would appear to leave 8.
Yes.
Would you like to do, we have a volunteer tonight.
I'm willing to help the board and the town out in any way I can.
You are truly, like, just selfless. So we have 8 and 9 covered. I think that covers all of them, right? 1 through 4, it's the Hughes show. Unless Mr. Bonan would like to relieve some of that from here, that is...
I would not expect Mr. Bonan to do so.
No, I'm gonna take the night off.
You're gonna take the night off?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes can warm up the crowd for... Sure. It would be a pleasure.
It would be a pleasure?
What is a crowd?
We need three.
15?
Yeah, 15 people to show up, I think, or 50. I thought it was 50.
It's pretty low.
No, it's 15, I think. I think it's 15.
Really?
I think what the timing is gonna be is like when you're almost there.
Right.
Yeah, pretty close. So you have to show up, Tim, just to make sure...
Oh, no, I'll be there, I just...
Just in case I come down with something that evening, it can be...
We'll plan a lot.
Don't do that.
In your absence, Mr. Bonan would be happy to step up and do those.
Yes, I would expect him to do so.
I will do that if he doesn't show up.
Okay, so we're all good on those. Approved minutes and possible votes.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 15 in their entirety?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Wojcicki, your...
Oh, actually, there's some executive.
Oh, executive ones?
There are, yep. Hold, please. Make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes, but retain them of October 1, 2018.
And October 15.
And October 15, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you report, sir.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, as the weather gets cooler, people will notice work being done at the municipal center, primarily in the police station, in connection with two projects. One is the replacement of the windows in that space, which is a project that was funded by town meeting, and the replacement of the heating ventilation and air conditioning system in that space as well, same time, which is a Green Communities grant for energy efficiency. And we'll be replacing what are basically air conditioners with so-called micro-split units that run off compressor that are both heating and cooling, using existing concrete pads and existing perforations in the wall, the microsplits themselves, and there'll be more zones in the police station. And we're hoping that will alleviate the need to ever again turn on those electric heaters, which are, you know, about as safe as a toaster oven and about as energy efficient. So we're actually looking to get rid of those. Just very briefly, remind people that the Green Communities grant, this is a significant state initiative that was put in place with the cooperation of National Grid, and all of the work is, all of the procurement work is done upfront by the state. So the firms that are basically the general contractors for these projects were chosen on a competitive bidding process by the Division of Energy Resources, and that comes to us as a complete package. So in other words, we're assigned, we know who we're gonna work with, they do their plans, they've already done an audit of all the town buildings, and I think you all got a copy of it, I don't know. It was dry reading, so I wouldn't expect you to have gone through the hundreds of pages of it. But those really were the menu for the project. All the things that were gonna be done were outlined in very clear language. Now, we're gonna sit down with the project proponents and eliminate some of the work, so we might come in under. Because if we're replacing the windows, we don't need to weatherize them with the Green Communities grant, we'll take that out. So there'll be a little bit of reconciliation between it. Just sometimes I think we did to remind folks that there are things that are exempt from competitive bidding and the entire procurement process, and one of them is energy efficiency projects, and that's right there in 30B. That's about all I had to bring up to you this evening. We're doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work preparing for this town meeting, we've also done quite a bit of preparation for negotiations with the collective bargaining units in the school system, and we are getting ready to release a lot of these projects. So we've been bidding things out and completing documents. The other project that's a notice in order to proceed has been issued is for our Best Practices Grant, again, another state grant for the pavement management study. So Stantec won that bid, and they've been asked to start the work and get it done before the snow flies. So that will inform our Chapter 90 choices going forward.
Excellent.
Matt, I was under the impression that we were gonna have an executive session with the school committee tonight.
I think you guys decided that an invitation would be offered, it's gonna be at town meeting.
Town meeting, be the priority.
Yeah, it's the meeting, yep, that one.
Good.
So that's what we'd agreed upon with them, because it was kinda short notice for this meeting, and trying to make sure that we could get a quorum with them, so...
Yeah, that's fair, they'll probably be there for that.
That was the thought, they'll all be there.
Anything else? Any old business?
Since we have the chief here, and I feel talking to the chief, how are our signs on Main Street working out?
Two of them are still working out well, one's down.
Man down.
Yeah. One was struck, we found it in two different pieces, two different ends of town, but anyway, the other two are working good, I got some positive feedback on it, and we'll look at replacing the one that was taken down, but the other two are in pretty good shape.
Heard a few complaints about people...
Yeah, it's probably, actually, it's probably about, you know, 50/50 from the people that I hear from, some people are happy with it, some people are not, but in my eyes, they're doing what they're meant to do, is slowing the traffic down. I think there's plenty of room there to get by with both vehicles and, you know, people crossing, you know, have a better opportunity at doing that, and cars are slowing down, so I think, I think it was a positive, positive move.
Good.
So we're gonna be packing those up for the winter soon, aren't we?
Yeah, we will, once we start getting some forecasted snow, we'll get them out of there, and bring them in for the winter, and bring them back out in the spring.
Good stuff.
The next time Mr. Bonan and I are up for reelection, make sure you put "I'll elect Tim Bonan" sticker on those signs, or we'll cry.
So Chief, you've taken delivery on all your Cruisers this year?
You can have Julie on it, if I have you.
We have, we got all three Cruises in, the last three that we had to replace this month, just over the past couple of weeks, we took delivery of them in there, in the fleet, up and running, so...
Excellent.
We're in good shape. So we replaced three last year, we replaced the three this year that we just got, so I think we're good, talking about Cruisers till FY '24.
'24.
Excellent.
The vendor is driving the town's new ambulance up from Indiana as we speak. So that second unit that was funded, that was Spring Town Meeting, correct?
Yeah, part of that was an earmark grant of $100,000, and the remainder was funded at the Spring Town Meeting.
And eventually, you didn't even use that, right? Or did you use New Growth, explain the mechanics of that?
No, we transferred money in to cover it, and I carried it over into the new fiscal year, because we weren't, we weren't sure when we were gonna take delivery, so...
So it sounds like we're in pretty good shape for vehicles and apparatus right now.
Right.
Excellent. All right, any new business? Seeing as none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.